Good evening and welcome to the October 5th, 2022 meeting, regular meeting of the Cottage Grove City Council. I'm Mayor Pro Tem Steve Dennis, sitting in for Mayor Bailey, who is not here tonight. Want to take a quick moment to share our condolences on behalf of him and his family in the passing of his father here within the last week. So he's away with his family, taking care of those matters. So we will all come together and carry on, do the people's business. The next item for us is Pledge of Allegiance. I will ask everyone at this point to please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number three is roll call, and our city clerk, Tammy Anderson, will you please help us with that?
Councilmember Cambada?
Here.
Councilmember Dennis?
Here.
Councilmember Thede?
Here.
Councilmember Olson?
Here.
Mayor Bailey.
All right. Next item is number four, which is open forum, and this is an opportunity for anyone who would like to speak on a topic that's not already on tonight's agenda. This would be your opportunity to do that. We do have some people that signed up tonight, three folks that we'll invite up. You'll have three minutes to share information with the council. The first one is Zach Hartfield. And as you approach, if you could please state your, your address for the record, and welcome to the council.
Thank you. So like you said, my name is Zach Hartfield. I live at 8068 Hornell Avenue South. And I'm just here to ask for more information on a donation from Pan Central CGC Holdings in the amount of $150,000 for economic development activities. I would just like to know who Pan Central is, why they donated so much money, and what they consider economic development activities. So if you could clarify that for me tonight, that'd be awesome.
Okay, so what we do in circumstances like that, we will kindly refer that matter over to our staff. And what they will do is they will reach out to you personally, probably by, via letter, with an explanation answering your, your question in depth.
Okay.
Anything else?
No, just that is all.
All right. Thank you, sir. Next on the list is Bonnie Madder.
Hello, Mayor Pro Tem and council members. Thank you very much for taking the time for my question.
Bonnie, real quick, could you please state your address?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. I assume everybody knows.
You're a veteran of this, so.
That's right. So I'm Bonnie Madder, and it's 6649 Inskip Avenue South. And I'm here this evening because I would like to request, there's a consent agenda item. It's 7M. It has to do with the golf course. I would like to request that that item be polled from tonight's consent agenda. I've submitted a public data information request, and I'm sure staff is working on it, but this should be things that are already known before you review it and approve it. And so that's my request. Thank you.
Okay, well, I do appreciate that request. I will, however, tell you that that is an item which is on our agenda, which has been fully vetted by our staff team. And I don't believe that it would be in our best interest at this moment to pull that. And one of the big reasons is us being able to access materials, building materials. As we know, we're still in the COVID economy, and what is happening is we have to get out in front of things, whether it be purchasing, we're not gonna, Bonnie, we're not gonna discuss it.
I know, we're not.
We're not gonna discuss it, but we're not gonna be pulling that off tonight's agenda.
You won't be doing this in 2023, so there's no rush on this. You'll probably have to push it out to 2024. And that's why I'm asking you, please pull it, look at the questions I submitted in the data request form, and then come back and approve it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the next person is Jennifer, is it Mauer?
Mauer, yeah.
Excellent. Welcome to the council chambers.
So my name's Jennifer Mauer. My address is 7700 74th Street South in Cottage Grove. So I'm here today. I've been a resident of Cottage Grove for the last seven years. I'm a pediatric nurse in St. Paul. I'm a mother of three. I love Cottage Grove. I love the community. I love the parks and the trails. More shopping and coffee shops and all that fun stuff. And in the last seven years, being here and raising my children here, I've seen the community really grow with more shopping, like I said, really love the shopping, and a lot more residents with the new houses being built. And I've also seen my three kids grow up and start going to school. I have a high schooler who's with me today. She goes to park, and then I have two elementary school kids, one in fourth grade and one in first grade, who go to Crestview Elementary. So my point with all this is I, I'm pretty concerned about their safety just with the intersection of Hinton and 80th Street, crossing the street to school. And I have a little bit of a story. On the morning of May 26, 2022, so the last school year, my six-year-old daughter, who was in kindergarten at the time, she was riding her bike with her brother, who was in third grade at the time, to school, like they've done so many days before. Basically, on nice days, they loved to ride their bike and walk to school. So being the mom that I am, watched them ride their bikes. We live pretty close. We're about a mile away from school. Watched them turn the corner onto Hinton, thought they were safe on the sidewalk. And normally on any other day, I would have just went about my business, but that day, for whatever reason, I felt the need to get in my car and make sure they got to school okay. So drove down Hinton, waved at them as they were riding their bikes to school. As I was stopped at the intersection of Hinton and 80th Street, waiting to turn right on that street, I kept looking in my rearview mirror, thinking that I'd see them behind me coming up, so I could wave and make sure they got to school that day. And I kept waiting, and once I saw the crossing guard who stands at 80th and Hinton, when her eyes got really big, I knew something was wrong when they weren't coming. So when the light turned green, I turned the corner and parked my car on 79th Street. And, I mean, my heart sank when I saw my six-year-old crying on this, on the grass on the side of the road with a crowd of people around her, and my son in third grade, standing helpless next to her. The next few minutes were a blur of other parents coming to see what was wrong, other students, teachers, police, firefighters, first responders, who are all amazing, by the way, just coming to assess the situation. And by some miracle, my 30-pound, six-year-old kindergartner only had one scratch on her chin from her helmet. And that was the only injury she had. And after talking to the police and my son about what had happened, it was deemed that the driver failed to yield at the crossing of Hinton and 79th Street, which is also a busy intersection. There's a lot of townhouses where people turn to go back to that area back there. So I just can't, I just keep going over in my mind that that could have been so much worse than it was. And I think, I'm so thankful that she only had one scratch, and I think that she had a guardian angel, that somehow that's all that happened. Her bike was totaled. She, it, you can't ride it. The handlebars were facing the wrong way. The tire was turned the wrong way, basically can't ride it anymore. And like I said, thankfully, she didn't have any other physical injuries. But I'm asking that this city council or Cottage Grove, that we can be more reactive instead of proactive with the safety of our kids when they cross the street at that school, to go across the street to school. I just don't want to see any other tragic accident that happens to anybody else. And my daughter, she carries mental trauma with her. She used to love riding her bike to school. She doesn't want to ride her bike at all. She doesn't want to walk to school. I've been driving her and picking her up every day. And I just, I'm really worried about that intersection right there. Hinton and 80th is a busy intersection, and I know there's a crossing guard with the school who's there morning and afternoon. Now they put that drive-through caribou right in the middle of 80th and 79th Street, which was already a busy area in itself. And I just feel like this is a huge hazard to our kids, and, and not only our kids, but other community as well. I mean, or everyone else in the community who walks on the sidewalks and crosses the street. People, you know, kids at, in elementary school, they're pretty impulsive, like they, they are gonna trust that we as adults are going to stop and yield.
Jennifer, I, I hate to cut you off.
Oh, that was my three minutes? Okay. Can I sum it up really quick?
Well, just here, here's what, what I'd like to do if, if I could.
Please.
We all have a lot of empathy for hearing the story, and we're very grateful and thankful that your daughter did not have serious injuries. What, what I'm going to do, as, as we did with Zach earlier, is ask our staff to look into this and respond, to provide a response for you. And just so you know, when responses come, they, they do also get put into our council agendas in the future, so that people can see also what those answers were. But as, as much as, as we, you know, might know about process, we really have to turn that type of thing over to our public safety team, who are experts in our city engineering, and the folks who really know and understand those details. So. But I, I certainly appreciate you coming in tonight. Thank you for that, for sharing with us. And just know that we're very committed to wanting to make sure that, that everybody here is safe and secure in the community.
Yeah, thank you. I think Cottage Grove can do better. I mean, like I said, I love Cottage Grove, but I think we can do better for the safety of our kids and not, like I said, I don't want to be reactive and have someone else get hurt. We need to be proactive and do something ahead of time.
And I also appreciate your, your initial comments on, on the, the growth and the different opportunities that have come to town. We, we work very hard to try to provide that for the community, so thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak before I close? Open forum? Not seeing anyone? Go ahead and close open forum. And then the next item is gonna be number five, which is adoption of the agenda, and I'll look for a motion to adopt.
Move the agenda.
Okay, motion made by Councilmember Thede. Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilmember Cambada. Any, any further discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries four to zero. Number six is presentations tonight, and we do have one under item A, which is Fire Prevention Week proclamation. And so I've actually asked Councilmember Cambada if he would be willing to read that proclamation for us.
Absolutely. Whereas, fire is a serious public safety concern, both locally and nationally, and homes are where people, homes are where people are at greatest risk of, from fire, and whereas, according to the National Fire Protection Association, most recent data, US home fires resulted in 2,580 civilian deaths in 2020, and fire departments in the United States responded to 356,500 home fires. And whereas, smoke alarms sense smoke well before you can, alerting you to the danger in the event of a fire in which you may have as little as two minutes to escape safely. And whereas, working smoke alarms cut the risk of dying in reported home fires in half, and residents should be sure everyone in the home understands the sounds of the alarms and knows how to respond. And whereas, residents should listen to the, for the sound of the smoke alarm, and when it sounds, respond by going outside immediately to the designated meeting place. And whereas, residents who have planned and practiced a home fire escape plan are more prepared and will therefore be more likely to survive a fire. And whereas, Cottage Grove Public Safety Fire Division and the City of Cottage Grove are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection education. And whereas, the 2022 Fire Prevention Week theme, "Fire Won't Wait, Plan Your Escape", effectively serves to remind us that it is important to have a home fire escape plan. Now, therefore, the mayor and city council for the City of Cottage Grove, County of Washington, State of Minnesota, hereby proclaim the week of October 9th to the 15th, 2022, as Fire Prevention Week with theme "Fire Won't Wait, Plan Your Escape", and encourages all Cottage Grove residents to be aware of their surroundings, look for places fire could start, listen for the sound of the smoke alarm, and learn and practice home fire escape plans in the City of Cottage Grove. Past this fifth day of October 2022.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Cambada. So before we go to Director of Public Safety Pete Kerner, we do have one small bit of business to do on that, and there's a staff recommendation that we proclaim this the week of October 9th through 15th, 2022, as Fire Prevention Week. Do I have a motion for that? So moved. Motion made by Councilmember Olson. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Thede. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries four to zero. Thank you. And Pete, welcome. How are you today?
Thank you. I'm doing well. Mayor Pro Tem and council, thanks for letting me hijack your meeting for a couple of minutes. Actually brought two guests. As you know, public ed, community involvement is extremely important to us. I couldn't be prouder in the last couple of years, especially with COVID, all the things we still continue to do. We did a lot of the drive-by parades for birthdays, vets, you name it, we're out there doing it. We're doing the, the neighborhood parties. The Night to Unite was extremely successful. But it's not me that does it. It's, it's the two gentlemen here, and I'm gonna have them step up and introduce kind of what they're gonna do for this year's open house. Fire Prevention Week has been going for 100 years, and I'm super excited that we get to open our doors again at the fire station to do some tours. Last year, we had a kind of audible, and we did it over at the Hero Center out in the back parking lot, which was super successful, but everyone wants to come up to the fire station and check things out. So if I could have Lieutenant Dandle and District Chief Brown come on up, and if you want to explain all the things you guys have planned for Saturday.
Absolutely. Thank you. Thank you. So like the director said, I'm Lieutenant Mike Dandle. My role with the department is I am the Public Education Officer, which is overseen by District Chief Brown. As the director mentioned, this will be our first open house in three years. In fact, I believe the last one, 2019, it snowed, so fingers crossed that we don't get snow next Saturday. So we're actually really looking forward to having everybody back, and once it's done, I'm actually gonna be kind of, take a breath for the rest of the year on kind of the big event. So my goal for it has been to be interactive for adults, kids, everybody, including our firefighters, interacting with the public. So obviously, the big thing will be the tour of the station. The city should be very proud of the station that was built, opened in 2018. So it still has some newness smell to it. So it's always exciting when we get everybody to come in, and they're just wowed by what they see. They'll be able to go in all of our trucks. Obviously, our brand-new ladder truck has been a big hit at all events that we've been able to take it to, so that'd be a great opportunity for people that haven't seen it or haven't been able to get to touch it yet. Hopefully, we can get a better experience for Councilmember Cambada, and it doesn't get a coolant leak like it did for Night to Unite, and but thank God we had him there, because we got the truck fixed pretty quick. We're gonna do kitchen fire demonstrations. We do have a prop that we can do a burn. I'm hoping to get Captain James Olson to do it. He's kind of one of our big speakers on that, and he loves doing it, and he's very good at what he does. Excited to have Regions Hospital come down. You know, they're kind of our medical direction for our ambulance, so they'll do a lot of EMS, and she's gonna come up with some other great topics. Marathon Refinery is hoping to come. They're gonna bring their new truck. I also, which is not on here, have gotten some confirmation that 3M's E-Squad will be coming out as well. So it'll be cool to have two entities that, you know, we do work with, if they have anything going on, and will be able to come out and do stuff with us. As far as what you can see up there, we do have a, it's kind of a makeshift-looking house that kids can use a fire hose and spray. You know, they like it, you know, adults get a kick out of watching their kids spray the hose. We're getting a car, so we'll be able to give people a sledgehammer. In fact, I still have a thank you note from Administrator Levitt for donating, for her son to do it a couple of years ago. But that's a great time, and safety will be taken, helmets, gloves, eye protection, and all that. So I'm excited. Also have the Lions coming out and doing food. We're also gonna have Beyond the Yellow Ribbon coming out. One of our firefighters recently took a youth fire prevention class, so he's gonna be talking on youth fire prevention. We'll be handing out hat stickers. Just got a whole bunch of new plastic fire hats that actually say Cottage Grove Fire Department on them, so it'd be pretty cool to get all those shelled out and get those going. So again, we're really looking forward to everybody coming out next Saturday, hoping weather's good.
And yeah, it should be a good time.
I got 30 seconds. So you had mentioned on how important it is to have smoke detectors. And the UL has done studies that are showing that people cannot smell while they're sleeping. And so they're not gonna smell the smoke. There's gonna be something else that would hopefully wake them up before it's too late, and that's the smoke detector. So that, that's one thing that I wanted to share with everybody. The second thing is, and we'll be sharing both these things at the open house, is the Close Before You Doze campaign. And it's important that the parents and the children close their bedroom doors at bedtime and for slumber, because the door is known to give people an additional about 30 minutes worth of protection in the event that they can't get out of their house and, and room. Keep their door closed. It prevents the smoke from coming in. The smoke alarms will do their thing. The kids can get up, feel the door. If it's hot, they open it, it's smoky. Close it, keep it closed. A big, a big killer in house fires are bedroom doors are open, fire alarms go off in the middle of the night. What do we all do? Get up out of bed and stand up. Where's the smoke? Right what we're standing up to. And people are mainly found either just steps away from the door, going out the way they always come in, or right by their bed, because they stood up, took a breath or two, and dropped right there. So close before you doze, and those smoke alarms are very, very important.
Okay, well, thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate not only that information, but also the great work that your entire team does here on behalf of the community. We're very supportive, as you know. And, and again, I, I know Councilmember Olson had stopped down for the Fill the Boot that you guys had the other day, and I heard you guys did just a fantastic job on it, so nicely done.
Thank you.
All right. Director Turner, anything else? All right. Well, thank you very much, gentlemen. All right, we'll move on to item seven, which is Consent Agenda. Is there anything that council wishes to poll? Councilmember Olson?
Item F.
Item F, which is Accept Donations Received Second and Third Quarter. Was there anything else? Okay, Councilmember Olson.
Thank you very much, Mayor Pro Tem. Item F, as you mentioned, is Resolution 2022-132, which is accepting donations received by the city between April 1 and September 30, 2022. And what I like to do when we get notification of these donations is just acknowledge the folks who have taken a little bit of time to give back to the city in some way, shape, or form. And I'll start with LSP, who has consistently been a, a very generous donor. LS Power here in the, in the City of Cottage Grove to our Economic Development Authority. And once again, they've made a donation in the amount of $150,000 to the EDA to be used for economic development activities through the EDA, like, for example, the ICSE Conference, those sorts of things. So we are very grateful for their continued support. Northwood Smokehouse donated $500 for the Fourth of July fireworks this year. Tenon Sanitation also donated $5,000 for the fireworks. Renewal by Anderson, $5,000 for the fireworks. Hy-Vee, $5,000 for the fireworks, and 3M, $5,000 for the fireworks. And speaking on behalf of the Cottage Grove Lions, let me tell you, you know, that is one of our favorite events of the year that we do. The big event down at Kingston Park where we, you know, grill hamburgers and hot dogs and brats, and we have door prizes for the kids, and, you know, lots of families come and spend quality time at the Fourth of July event. And then, of course, the highlight of the day is the fireworks show, and the more donations we get, the better the show. And, you know, when these businesses step up, we're definitely very, very grateful. 3M also donated $5,000 to the Strawberry Fest this year. Our Lions Club donated $500 in gift cards for police and community engagement. Those gift cards were recently used. Those gift cards were recently used, in fact, to replace a backpack and some belongings for somebody who'd had a bike accident on their way to school. And the Cottage Grove Public Safety Team decided to take those gift cards and put them to good use for that individual. So that was really nice to see. Joe Fishbach donated some exercise equipment to the fire department that totaled about $4,000. Joe is our Human Resources Director here in the City of Cottage Grove. So we're very excited to get that donation. Linda Rodenberg donated a memorial bench to the playground at Meadowgrass Park. And that was a $1,500 donation. Those memorial benches are really, really nice. And the Public Works Team and the Parks Team does a great job putting those together. We also want to thank Dennis Brothers Liquors for donating $250 to the Cottage Grove Convention and Visitors Bureau, otherwise known as Discover Cottage Grove, to donate, or excuse me, to sponsor a hole, which I was lucky to work at all year this year, or all day this year at the Public Safety Golf Tournament at River Oaks. Stan Tech has donated $2,100 in support of our Season of Giving event this year. And then finally, Rumka Excavating, they donated $2,000 to the new landscaping at Oakwood Park, which we all got to see this evening when we did our ribbon cutting at 5:15. So if you haven't seen Oakwood Park yet, get out there and check it out. Rumka and the rest of the team did a great job. And that's all I have.
Okay. Well, thank you, Councilmember Olson. And what I always like to do is just put a little addendum on that, and that is that all donations, no matter how large or small, are always appreciated.
Absolutely.
It makes a difference and helps to make our home be a better place. So not having anything else being polled at this point, we'll look for a motion to approve the consent.
So moved.
Motion made by Councilmember Olson. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilmember Cambada. Any further discussion? Not seeing any? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries four to zero. And what that means is that anything that was on here all the way through letter M has approved, and we are good to go for the night. Number eight is Approved Disbursements. And what we're looking for is approving payments for the period of 9/16/2022 through 9/29/2022 in the amount of $5,625,235.34. Do I have a motion to approve this?
Move the bills.
Move made by Councilmember Thede. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Olson. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries four to zero. Number nine is Public Hearings. We do not have any tonight. Number 10 is Bit Awards. Same thing, nothing on the agenda. Number 11 for Regular Agenda, there's nothing. And that'll bring us to number 12, which is Council Comments and Requests. And we'll start down here, as we usually do, with Councilmember Cambada.
Well, I was a little late to the ribbon cutting today, but the Parks Department is doing fantastic work. I think I visited, I know that you did, the, trying to see every park in spring. And I think I've, just this last month, with the leaves changing, I visited Camel's Hump Park. Woodridge Park is a favorite of my kids. And I just want to say thank you to city staff for, you know, giving my kids someplace safe and fun to play. And, you know, I appreciate that we continue to invest in our community in that way.
Excellent. Thank you very much, Councilmember Cambada. Next will be Councilmember Thede.
Well, it turns out that Strawberry Fest is throwing a party to show everybody how fun it is to be on the Strawberry Fest Committee, and how fun it is to work together to bring a fantastic event to the City of Cottage Grove. So this party is actually on October 13th at River Oaks at 6:00 p.m. It was October 13th at River Oaks at 6:00 p.m., and we encourage everyone to come down and see how fun it is to help plan all the events and everything else. Because the more, the merrier. We definitely, it makes it a much easier task, and we're just right on the verge, even though Monster Bash is, the parade and that is at the end of the month, on the 28th, 29th. And, but we're just starting to get into that planning for Strawberry Fest next year. And we need some really good and energetic, smart people. And I know there's a ton of smart people out there that like to have fun. So you remember when that was? October 13th at River Oaks at 6:00 p.m. Be there to have fun.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Thede. And Councilmember Olson.
It's always a tough act to follow, I'll tell you that. When was it? October 13th at 6 o'clock?
That's right.
At River Oaks?
Very good.
Yeah, thank you. I got it. All right. So I have a couple of things here, Mr. Mayor Protem. First of all, for those of you who are not aware, tomorrow night, we have our Police Department Open House right here at Cottage Grove City Hall in our Public Safety Facility from 4:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. Yours truly, and Mayor Protem Dennis will be working in our yellow shirts tomorrow because we will be representing our Beyond the Yellow Ribbon Team for the City of Cottage Grove. Cottage Grove Lions will be there in their black shirts tomorrow, and they will be grilling all kinds of goodies, and they'll have chips and hot dogs and waters and things for people. And of course, for anybody who's interested in learning more about the Cottage Grove Police Department or has an interest in a law enforcement career, this will be a great opportunity for you to come and check out the facility, ask some questions of our police officers, of our community service officers, of our police reserves. So stop by and see us again, 4 o'clock to 7 o'clock tomorrow night, right here at Cottage Grove City Hall. There will also be some demonstrations. I believe the helicopter from the State Patrol is going to be here, and we'll have some other fun and exciting things that'll take place just across the way here at the Hero Center. So you'll be able to check out that facility as well. And trust me when I tell you, if you haven't seen it yet, you're going to be very impressed. I also wanted to just remind people that early voting has started. You can cast your ballot tomorrow if you'd like to. All you need to do is go over to the Washington County South Service Center here in the City of Cottage Grove, and you can cast your ballot from 8:00 in the morning until 4:30 in the afternoon. It's real easy to do. You just walk in, just like you would on Election Day. You get what's known as an in-person absentee ballot. You fill that ballot out. You put it in a nice little envelope, and you hand it to the people there at the service center, and away you go. It doesn't take long, and it's a really great way to stop getting phone calls and stuff in your mailbox because as soon as it is known that you have voted, the various candidates are going to stop sending you stuff because they don't want to waste money on you. So if you're sick of getting all those phone calls and you're sick of getting stuff in your mailbox, that's the way you stop it. But whatever, whenever, wherever, please make sure that you do vote in this year's election. It's very important. And then the last thing is, I just wanted to touch base on the donations again. I know in open forum, we had a question about, you know, some of the things that those donations go to support. And I'm certainly not going to be able to give you all of the information that the staff will be able to give you, but just a few highlights. So we do have an Economic Development Authority here in the City of Cottage Grove. That's the EDA. They are a separate branch of government. They are their own entity. The mayor is the president of the EDA. Vice Chair is our Mayor Protem, Steve Dennis. And then we have a variety of other residents and business owners who sit on the Economic Development Authority. The Economic Development Authority does a lot of really neat things for the business community here in the City of Cottage Grove. So to give you an idea of what those donated funds go towards, we've had what's called a facade improvement program here in the City of Cottage Grove that gets funded through the EDA, where we match grants for businesses where they want to actually improve the look of their building. They may want to change the brick. They may want to change the signage. They may want to do some different graphics or marketing art. And that is part of the facade improvement program, and they can apply to get some funds from the city to help them with that. When we were in the very early stretches of the COVID pandemic, I think everybody remembers that a lot of our restaurants and bars were really struggling. Many of them were closed by the governor's decree so that we could stop the spread of COVID-19. And then even when they reopened, they had to reopen on a limited basis. So one of the things that our EDA did is we actually opened up some grant opportunities for those businesses here locally who were having a tough time to be able to receive grants that they did not have to pay back for operating their business, keeping up their payroll, keeping people employed, et cetera. And again, that's what some of those funds go towards. We've also done various land purchases where we may have a business site that is vacant, and the EDA will actually purchase that site for redevelopment. And then, you know, we can sell it to an interested end user at a later time. But it's another great way to make sure that our business community here in the city stays vibrant and that we can continue to attract new businesses while retaining the businesses that we have. So that's just a short snapshot of some of the things that those funds go towards. But LSB has been a very generous donor for many years, and our EDA is very grateful for the funding that they provide so that we can do the things that we've done and able to grow the business community here in the City of Cottage Grove. And I'm sure that Mayor Protem Dennis can give you some more details because he and the mayor have done some Facebook Live chats recently about the value of the growth that has been brought to the community through either retail business or other commercial entities and the business park, et cetera. The city is very healthy as a result of some of those investments that we make. So it's definitely worthwhile. And, Mr. Mayor, that's all I have. I'll turn it over to you.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember Olson. And one last thing that I'll just add, and thank you for providing some of those details to the community. The money that we get for use in the EDA is a donation. And I want to be very clear that folks know it's not taxpayer dollars. It's not money coming, you know, from residential property taxes, as an example. It's all donated money. So the money is used for great purposes and intends to help us to build a vibrant local economy, to structure a healthy business environment, and to do the types of things that we've been very successful here over the past eight years, which has resulted, you know, to a fairly substantial degree, when you look at the almost $2 billion of economic development growth. If you back the housing component out of it, we've had a lot of things happening in our business park, and a lot with, you know, retail and commercial space as well. So we're doing quite well. We've got a great program. And I do know that in many instances, whether it was Greater MSP, Minneapolis Business Journal, Minneapolis-St. Paul Business Journal, we have been the talk of the town for the success that we've had. And it's really extraordinary success, and we're grateful. And we owe it not only to that, to the commission members and to our great staff team who really do the heavy lifting when it comes to getting the job done. We get to sit up here and look good and smile and say yes when those types of things happen. But it's really a great program. So thank you for bringing that up. So I have a few things for us tonight. And the first thing I want to do is go back and just piggyback off of what Councilmember Cambada had mentioned. We talked about the ribbon cutting down at Oakwood Park. And I want to provide an address We talked about the ribbon cutting down at Oakwood Park, and I want to provide an address so people know where the park is. It's 7851 Harkness Avenue South. That's here in Cottage Grove, 55016. And then the other thing which I would like to highlight is the fact that through our Convention and Visitor Bureau, we have a fantastic website called discovercottagegrove.com. And what you can do is you can go on that website, and it's very user-friendly. You can click on the links. You can go right where you want to go. If you want to learn about our parks, if you want to learn about trails, about, you know, businesses in the community or other amenities that we have, which are substantial, it's a great place to do that. So discovercottagegrove.com will get you in, get you a front row seat to be able to explore all kinds of neat things that happen here in our city. The second item I want to talk about is, you know, we talked about the Lions and cooking of burgers and brats and those types of things, and the bacon cheeseburger that they do is amazing. I think sometimes you guys even smoke the bacon, right? So it's pretty cool. But there's another event in town that provides a meal opportunity, and Justin, you know where I'm going with this.
I'm looking forward to it.
Acacia Lodge, number 51, which is the Cottage Grove area masons, is having their annual spaghetti dinner. Now, that's going to be this Saturday, October 8th, 2022, from 4:00 to 7:00 PM. Here is the pricing. Adults are $10. Kids between the ages of four and 12 are $5. And if you're three and under, it is free of charge. The address is 11094 Seventieth Street South, Cottage Grove, Minnesota. Once again, 55016 for those that need to put that into their finder on their vehicle. But I will say it's the biggest event fundraising for the local masons. They use a lot of that money through donation purposes, especially in the areas of providing local young people with educational scholarships. It's really a neat thing. So the spaghetti is fantastic. It's really a deal at twice the price. It's all you can eat, and it's a great service by a group of fantastic people there. So that's number two. Number three, I actually have a question I want to bring up here for a city administrator. And as those of us on the council are aware, there has been a bit of a challenge with the contractor company that we use for water billing services, the Opus 21. And so I did have a constituent come in to pay me a visit today who had some questions and wanted to get some feedback and some direction on kind of where we're at in the process with things, what's happening. And Jennifer, I would really appreciate if you could maybe provide some key details here for the community. I think this was mostly affecting the rural area, like the old Cottage Grove area, I believe, but if I'm missing the point, you could fill me in on that.
And Pine Cooley.
Yep. But we're looking, you know, just get details, and then also just, I think I could speak for everybody in the council that we're looking for a good outcome here for our community members who are affected.
Well, Mayor Pro Tem and members of the council, we did notify you that unfortunately our vendor did not actually mail over 400 bills last year to our rural residential customers, and they only receive a bill once a year. And so it's not something that they necessarily expect every month, and some do pay electronically online, and some just rely on that bill that comes to them. We became aware of the situation after, unfortunately, we sent over 400 delinquent letters to those residents. And I know that our residents take an amazing amount of pride in paying their bills and being responsible citizens, and so we apologized to them in a letter that we sent to them shortly thereafter after we realized the error, because clearly we know our residents take pride in that, and we did not mean to insult them in any way. And so we apologized, and then also, they do not need, we are providing additional grace period to be able to pay that, so they wouldn't need to pay their 21 bill until January of 2023. There won't be any late charges assessed to them. And then also, to help reduce the confusion, because in November, they will actually get their 2022 bill, and at that time, we will provide individual statements to make sure that there's clarity for those that have paid their 21 bill and who have not, so they'll know exactly how much to pay. We're working with our provider to provide those very detailed letters. But I can assure you that we are taking action with our vendor to prevent this from happening in the future. Unfortunately, they do some of their printing out of state, and we have asked them to bring that printing back to the state of Minnesota and also asked them to rectify the situation and work with us. So we do extend our apologies to those residents that received those delinquent notices, and we are working to correct that, and please accept our apologies for that error.
Okay, well, thank you very much for that explanation, and I believe in good faith, the fellow who came in, he and I talked, and, you know, he understands that the city would never seek to create a problem for the residents regarding an issue like that. And one of the things that I had explained to him, and we all know this to be true, we live in a very, very imperfect world right now. And so sometimes there can be room for a little bit of understanding and a little bit of empathy and compassion for those as we all try to bring things together necessarily without having all the parts there, and that's a tough thing. But thank you very much for that.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, may I add something?
Yes, sir.
Jennifer, if you would, please pass along very positive feedback to Dar. I had some of my friends in Pine Cooley reach out to me about this situation, and to a person, the thing that they all said was, as soon as they called Dar, she took care of it. She was wonderful. Her patience, her understanding. Boy, I tell you what, if you're going to, you know, face some people who are a little upset about something that we screwed up on, Dar is the person you want handling it. So if you would, just let her know. Having her in the position that she's in, doing what she's doing, certainly softened the blow a great deal.
Well, thank you, Councilmember. I'll pass that along because you are correct. She's been fielding many, many calls.
Yes.
And so taking her time to make sure that we educate and inform and apologize for the mistake.
Yeah, she's top-notch. Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you, Councilmember Olson, for that. Good call on that. And then the last item that I have is something that I actually requested. You know, being transparent and open and honest to the community is a very, very important thing, and that's something that I know that we all strive to do here on a daily basis as we do our work here on behalf of the city. So some may be aware that there was both an article and a letter to the editor that went into the Cottage Grove Journal Newspaper here very recently, and it was talking about the Mississippi Landing Court case that we've been involved in. So I have a statement that I want to go through, again, to provide some transparent information, factual information that can be put on a timeline as we work our way through the process. So in early 2021, the city of Cottage Grove prepared the Mississippi Dunes Master Plan to help the city determine the highest and best use for the former Mississippi Dunes Golf Course, located south of 103rd Street and north of the Mississippi River. After extensive visioning, planning, and public engagement process, the master plan was reviewed by the Planning Commission and recommended to the city council for approval. The council approved the master plan in November of 2021. Following the approval of the master plan, Polte Homes proposed a residential development called Mississippi Landing. The proposed development will include nearly 70 acres of open space, which is double any applicable legal requirement, including a 12-acre increase in the state's Gray Cloud Dunes Scientific and Natural Area, otherwise known as SNA, and then 30 acres for habitat preservation and 25 acres for a river buffer, park, and open space along the Mississippi River corridor. These plans were consistent with the city's master plan for the land. However, some members of the public, primarily environmental activists outside the city, desired to see the entire parcel taken and preserved as open space. Minnesota law requires that an environmental review be conducted for certain projects that could impact the environment. An environmental assessment worksheet, known as EAW, is the most common method for this environmental review. It is a document designed to lay out the environmental facts of the specific project being proposed, and it analyzes and reviews topics such as existing ground cover, zoning, geology, water resources, air quality, noise, ecological resources, hazardous materials, and traffic. The bigger purpose of an EAW is to determine if a more robust analysis called an environmental impact statement, otherwise known as EIS, is required for the project. As part of its project proposal, Polte Homes submitted the mandatory EAW. As required by law, the draft EAW is published with the Environmental Quality Board for a 30-day public review and comment period, as well as published on the city's website. After conclusion of the 30-day comment period on February 2nd of 2022, the city council held a hearing and took testimony on the EAW. Based on all the evidence in the record, including the 371-page report from the consultant, which found that the project would have no potential for significant environmental effects, the council made the determination that an environmental impact statement was not required for the project. On March 16th of 2022, three individuals called relators filed a petition with the Court of Appeals. They requested that the court review the city's determination that an EIS was not required. They sought a declaration that the city's decision was arbitrary and capricious, or in other words, they wanted a declaration that the city's decision was not based on substantial evidence. The Court of Appeals accepted the petition and issued a court ordered, called a writ of certiorari on March 17th, 2022. The court authorized, this authorized the court to conduct a review of the city's decision. Anyone here at this council meeting tonight knows that we do things by procedure. The same is true with the court process. There is a strict procedure that must be followed. When the court issued the writ, the relators were required to serve the writ on all required parties within 30 days, and this included the city and Polte Homes. The relators timely served the city with the writ within the 30-day timeframe. However, they did not serve Polte Homes until September 9th, 2022, which is about 176 days late, and only did so after the court brought the failure of service to its attention. The exciting news is that on September 20th of 2022, the Court of Appeals dismissed their appeal because the relators failed to timely serve Polte Homes. Therefore, the city's determination that an EIS is not required stands, and the matter is concluded. While the city believes the Court of Appeals would have upheld its decision due to substantial evidence and support in the record, the city is pleased to have this matter decided in its favor so that we can move forward. And so as I close off of this statement, which the staff and our legal team assisted us with, I do want, for the record, people to know and understand a little bit about how we do our job here at this desk. So what I brought in was my swearing-in statement from four years ago, and I want to read this because I think folks need to know that there's a legal process and requirement that we have to follow. So I'm just going to read it verbatim. "I, Steve Dennis, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Minnesota, and that I will faithfully execute and discharge the duties of the office of council member for the city of Cottage Grove, County of Washington, State of Minnesota, according to the law and the best of my judgment and ability." And we all do that, and we do that every single day. We've taken an oath to do that, and it is at the heart of the very business that we serve here for the people of our community. So because these articles were put out, the letters were put out into that paper, I felt it was important that members of our community, I've had a few ask me, that we could provide a little bit more clarity and detail for the historic record on exactly what happened. And based upon the circumstances, we are now in a position to move forward. So we'll do that by moving on to item number 14, which is, actually 13, workshops open to the public. We have none tonight. Item 14 is workshops closed to the public. We don't have any. And number 15, we'll seek a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Motion made by Councilmember Thede. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilmember Cambada. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries four to zero. Thank you very much, everyone. Have a great night.